All right, I will call the meeting to order. Could we please have a roll call?
Ms. Christian?
Here.
Mr. Gobert?
Here.
Mr. Patel?
Here.
Ms. Oliver? Ms. Dr. Bishop?
Here.
Ms. Junicle?
Yes.
Ms. Shul?
Here.
Okay, we have a quorum. Let's try and look at the wrong agenda. So, the first item on the agenda is a consent agenda. Before I ask for a motion to approve it, is there anything anyone would like to request be taken off the consent agenda and put into the main agenda? Not hearing none, nor a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Sumut.
Thank you. Just a second. Thank you, Barbara. Could please have a roll call?
Ms. Christian?
Yes.
Mr. Gobert?
Yes.
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Ms. Dr. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Junicle?
Yes.
Ms. Shul?
Yes.
Okay, the motion passed. Next item on the agenda, public comments. I see no public. Is there anybody by the door, Anna?
Nope.
Okay. We have no public to have comments. Next item on the agenda, staff reports, starting with Ms. Kate Hall.
Thanks, Jay. So, a few things in addition to what was in my report. I did want to mention, I know it's been probably just about a year since we mentioned about First Amendment audits, people coming filming, coming into the library to film, and trying to kind of provoke a response to hopefully say like, "You're not following the law." And this is something that we've experienced multiple times over the past year. You will not find any videos up on any websites because our staff have been very well-trained by Kelly in how to respond, which is that people are allowed to record, and that there are steps that we can take if another patron is bothered by it, and there are also steps we can take if they are filming children. They have not tried to do that in any way. You can film children, you just can't post it to any social media or websites. We did this week have another audit. I again expect that it will not show up on any websites because it was completely uneventful. A gentleman came in, staff greeted him, asked if there's anything that, you know, he needed help with, said no, he kept filming, nothing else happened, and he departed. So, I say this because I think it's, we often share kind of the things that are happening, but I think it's important to note that these are still happening, but that we are handling them, and staff are doing a really good job of following training and knowing that if they are uncomfortable with being filmed, that they are able to leave and go into a backstaff area where they cannot be filmed. And so, I just want to commend Kelly and all of our staff that have dealt with these, because it is the public service staff that have to deal with these because that's usually who's out on the floor. But these are still happening, and while you might hear things on social media from other libraries where they're posting things, you will hopefully not ever see that here because until someone decides to post a really uneventful, boring one, like the ones that they get here, you probably won't. So, I wanted to just mention that.
Are they interacting with the staff?
Sometimes they do, but usually the staff will say like, "Oh, is there anything I can help you with?" They'll say, "No," or, you know, they'll mutter and be like, "Oh, well, it looks like these are where the new books are." And like, "I see that there's a window, and I can see..." Like, they'll just kind of have a running monologue.
Okay.
But I don't think that was the case with this one, it didn't sound like, from the staff. And they mostly just avoid the children's departments because they don't, you know, they know.
Thank you.
Yeah. So, yeah. I also wanted to mention a couple EDI updates. As I emailed out, I'm very excited that we have our new HR director who will be starting May 1st. Her name is Becky Moore, and she is coming to us from the Glencoe Park District, as well as a number of not-for-profit organizations that she worked at previously. And she has a long history of working within the HR landscape, as well as a strong background in creating inclusive places, and has studied both here and abroad on the intersection between class status and race, and is excited to be joining our team. And she will be coming to the May board meeting, so the board will have a chance to meet her. And the plan is that she'll be attending all the board meetings, as do Kelly and Anna, and so they're going to tell her just how much fun the board meetings are, so she'll be super pumped. I'm sure. We also have continued to do a lot of work around staff capacity. Have worked with Lily on this over the past several months. One of the things that we've been working on is committee capacity, as well as departmental capacity. And we just completed a pulse survey with staff to kind of see, are we moving the needle in any appreciable way? And we were very happy to see that 78% of staff say that they have the capacity to complete their workload each week, which we had not surveyed that in the 2023 survey. That was a result of that staff felt overcapacity after that survey last year. And so, that was wonderful. We also saw some additional metrics that have improved in the areas of whether workloads are fairly divided. We saw a 14% increase, job performance being evaluated fairly, saw a 10% increase, the feeling respected and valued by library leadership, which is me, Kelly, Anna, and Lori, seeing a 10% increase, and being able to voice a contrary opinion without fear of negative consequences, also seeing a 4% increase. Time and autonomy being respected by library leadership saw a little bit of a dip, which Lily attributes to there being fewer people that, not that many fewer, but took the survey, and that this was something that, as we're working through things, they said, "We can sometimes see a little dip before things go up." That number is still decent with 73% of staff voting favorably in that metric. So, we are seeing numbers continue to increase as, after the 2023 survey, and we'll be doing another pulse in June. And we'll be working on, hopefully, in like another six months or so, working on a follow-up, more in-depth survey like the one we did last year. But I think that just looking at these numbers now, Lily has shared, I said to her like, "Well, how do, like, what is a good change? How do we know if like, 'Oh, is that great,' or like, 'Oh, that's okay.'" And they said that if we see scores that are under a 5% increase, it says to them, "You're not doing anything." If you see scores in the 5% to 10% region, that that means that you're putting the work in, you're seeing change, and that when you're seeing scores over 10%, it means like, "Wow, you guys are really actively working on this really hard, and you're doing a good job to change the things that have been identified by staff and within the report." So, I think that these numbers are really promising and good, and I think that they will... Now, it is a matter of continuing to do this work, and continuing to reinforce some of the different things that we've put in place to make sure that that is happening, both at a leadership level, as well as all the way down throughout the organization.
Can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
How, how do you discern within each category what specifics? In other words, it's a big category, and it's a scattergun that you hope you're going to hit, what you need to. But how do you, especially with some of those that are at the 4%, how do you get to what specific thing, or is there any way to do that?
Yeah, so, I love surveying, and we know that people can get survey fatigue. So, my inclination is always, like, when it says time and auto, "My time and autonomy are respected by library leadership." 73% of staff said, "Yes, they feel that it is." But it was a little bit of a dip because it used to be 77%. So, why, why did that happen? We could attribute it to some of the staff had left, the newer staff, maybe there's more oversight because we're getting people trained. Like, there's a number of different things. So, Lily encourages us not to oversurvey, so we did not have any comments with this. It was all quantitative only. And, and with that, that means that there is some kind of, I don't want to say guesswork. We have the survey results from 2023 that we're using with the recommendations from Lily. And so, it is spending time checking in with the manager, saying, "What do you think? Are you having staff comment? Are you noticing anything?" It's checking in with ourselves. Are we asking things of staff, or getting, you know, too in the weeds on things? And so, we've been talking a lot about like, moving us up out of the weeds, and that's something we talk about at our leadership team meetings. And so, it isn't, from my perspective, just a one thing. It is a, how do we look at, what is the underlying thing? And the underlying thing to me is that staff want to feel that they can make choices, and that they can have a voice in what they're doing and how the library is. So, when I think about that, like, I'm thinking about the strategic plan. We're going to be working on an implementation plan. We want staff to be able to have a voice in how that looks, and not just like, "Here's your list of tasks to do." And so, I think it is, it requires looking at a lot of different factors, and relying on others in the organization to help keep us informed, which, you know, we can't possibly know how every single staff member feels. That would be way too in the weeds. And we rely on our managers to really know that. So, that's really what we've been trying to shift our focus. I'm going to just pause talking and see if Kelly or Anna has anything that you think I'm missing, or that you want to add to that, because it's a, it's definitely a group effort with everyone in leadership.
Right. I mean, to, to answer the question about how are we gathering data on specifically what staff are talking about, I feel like you covered that. I don't think there's anything more than what you said.
A lot of words. So...
Thank you.
Um, and so, the part of this too is that the departments have been doing work on assessing where capacity is. And I think that these numbers are also showing that that work is really impacting. So, I think it is making sure that we're not just assuming that it's a one-and-done thing, or there's only one facet, that everything is multifaceted, and, which can make it confusing and a little messy. But also, that's why having the quantitative numbers to look at occasionally is helpful, to just check in. Like, are we on the right track? Okay, seems like we kind of are. Let's just keep checking.
Great.
So, one other thing I wanted to, well, two other things I wanted to mention from my report. One, I was going to put this in next month's report, but I realized it was just last night, so it would be fun to mention it here. We annually participate in Student Government Day with the Village, and so yesterday, we got to have four eighth graders come here and learn about how the library, how the work gets done in the library. And Kelly, and Anna, and Kim, and I, and Susan helped with helping share that. And we had four students from St. Norbert's and Maple and MBJH come, and they did a fabulous job. There's a mock Village Board meeting, and the person who played, well, not played, but the person who was the assistant director for the library came up with a fourth option in the scenario that all the students had to weigh in on, and, and suggested that we add this fourth option to the three considerations. And then, one of his friends was on the board, and, and they had obviously worked on this ahead of time, and it was great because they were like, "Yes, and, you know, I think we should consider this fourth option, and I, I make a motion to add this as a consideration." And it was, they just did such a good job, and you could tell that they were so thoughtful. And it, it continues to just be such a delight to get to see how engaged and excited the students in Northbrook are around being civically engaged. And it is, it's always fun to get to spend the time with them and teach them a little more about the behind-the-scenes, hopefully brainwashing them a little bit into like, "You know what's a fun career path? Local government." I don't know if we convinced anyone, but I, hopefully, I know we did get some teen volunteers for the summer out of it, so... So, yeah, it'll be really fun.
This is what happened to my son. He did that, and then he volunteered last year at the library. He did the government.
See, we're, we're like the cults. We just like, just laying child breadcrumbs.
They always start with the mom.
First you get the mom on the board. The last thing I wanted to mention from my report was that I did include in it that we do have Staff Development Day coming up on May 10th, and I shared a list of what the agenda items are. I'm very much hoping that board members would be available for the end of the day at about 4 o'clock to do the staff recognition of anniversaries and talking about the year ahead. But we also have some other really wonderful trainings that we're going to be offering, and I know we talked in the past about having the board be more present during Staff Development Day. And so, I wanted to offer that up as something that if anyone is interested in coming for a part or all of it, we can certainly do that, and we're very excited. We have programs on EDI, AI, presentations, giving and receiving feedback, as well as some like, team building. We're going to do a nature walk as one of the relaxation activities for a subgroup. And so, if any board members would like to do that, I'm going to reach out by email tomorrow. But I'm also happy to answer any questions on any of the sessions that we're doing, and, and share a little bit more.
Forgot one part about that. It's also the Flamingo Friday.
Oh, I don't consider that to be part of Staff Development Day, which is there. Yes. Laura has already said a maybe. I have you down as a maybe for Flamingo Friday.
Maybe until I got to go to a concert that night across the street.
Yes. If anyone else would like to participate in Flamingo Friday that isn't already on a Village Board commission that needs to be there for that, it is very fun.
So, Flamingo Friday, is it, starts at?
Five.
Five, and then the board thing goes from?
Four to five.
Okay. Four to five here?
Five.
Okay, so Nmesh is a yes. Okay.
I know my wife is going to have me picking stuff up and moving things around anyways for them.
Yeah.
Whatever it is.
Okay, cool.
So, I would plan now, four here, and then five there. Like, tentatively, but until I confirm, but...
Okay.
Yeah. Until...
One of the Village trustees does dress up as a flamingo, and it's pretty fun.
Trustee Hebo.
Yeah. Oh, and she does, she still does that?
She does. She got a new blow, so it's like... It's a hoot. I was asking her if, she was ready. She's like, "I've got it all. I tested to make sure it's in place."
It's fun.
Okay, awesome. And that is everything I had from my report, unless anyone has any questions on anything.
I see and hearing no questions. Next item on the agenda is board member reports. So, the nominating committee met before today's board meeting. We're meeting again before the May board meeting, and we will be presenting a slate of directors at the board's meeting in May. Anybody else have anything they'd like to report?
I, we've already discussed it, but I wanted to thank the library for participating in Flamingo Friday across the parking lot, Friday, May 10th, 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. I will actually be late. I have a work commitment that day I cannot get out of, so, but I'll be there in the middle of Flamingo Friday, and it's a lot of fun, so, hope you can all come. Hope everybody listening can come.
And everybody watching later.
And everybody watching.
Unless it's after May 10th, and then wait until the 20th.
And then wait.
What's the name?
Um, yeah, actually, yesterday, I came in to join for the GBN eighth annual, I believe.
The incubator? Oh, I wanted to.
Okay.
I was really impressed, though. It was my first time attending it, and, one, I was, you know, we talk about the strategic direction, and this really is where community happens. We've talked a little bit about using the auditorium for other events. This perfectly exemplified the space. And when you think about the community, you had really good mentors there. Their backgrounds are just phenomenal. The students did a great job. They put a lot of effort into it. There was four teams, and all of them did such a good job. And then, the judges are pretty decorated too, and the staff, they noted that the staff did a really good job. It went all the way up until closing time, but, I mean, it works. So, I just thought it was a neat use of some of the things that we talked about, the space, that the community just really taking advantage of it. It showed very well, so I'm excited about your plans now for using it even more.
You want to hear a cool incubator story?
Oh, so, we... I wasn't, I didn't know that you were going to do that.
I didn't know I was going to do it either.
Wow, putting you on the spot.
Yeah, she's good. She tells a story really well. This just happened this week, so...
Yeah, so, when we discard books, we used to work with a company called Discovery Books, and Discovery Books abruptly closed. And so, we had a Northbrook resident come in and say, "Hey, I started this business. Want to know if I can meet with you." So, sat down and met with them, and he starts the meeting, and he says, "I'm a Glenbrook North graduate, and I went to University of South Carolina, and I won the GBN incubator contest with this idea that I had for finding, repurposing books, discarded books." And when he went to South Carolina, he was in their business school, and he had, he used the same project for his class at South Carolina, and actually made a business out of it. And that's the business that he came to us and wanted to do business with us, and it's called Knowledge Exchange. And he takes the books, and he tries to sell them or repurpose them, or then he recycles them appropriately. So, but it was a student who went to GBN and won the incubator, and then...
We just had our first pickup this week.
Yeah, he came and he picked up, and he is taking some of our discarded media items as well, so audiobooks, DVDs, Blu-rays, and he's going to try to repurpose those as well.
Also worked really closely with the friends. So, the friends were like, "This, this person's really good," when we were looking.
So, his company is very small, and he has selected four libraries to work with, and one of them is us. So, yeah, we're so, we're really excited to be able to partner with him and help him.
Very exciting, yeah.
Great job.
Yeah.
So, who knows what the winner from that?
There are some fascinating ideas.
Yeah, yeah. I was next door, listening to a mock board meeting, but the incubator night is always a blast. It's amazing the things that come out of it.
Is that all the board member reports? Okay, next item on the agenda is unfinished business on the strategic plan adoption. Kate, are you going to present on this, or is there someone who, from the board, who was on the strategic planning committee?
I, you know, Stacy and Barbara and I did not talk about that, so I just thought I would bring it up. We have three things to look at. We have new recommendations for vision and mission, and a new recommendation for the strategic direction number two. And then, the goal tonight is to approve the strategic plan, and then we will start working on the implementation, which will be including the action plan and the steps that we will take, you know, over the next few years, focusing mostly, you know, focusing heavily, of course, on the first year, so that we can get it, get things rolling. So, these came from a combination of Stacy and Barbara, and Janet put her communicator hat on and helped, and we also came up with an additional option when Janet and I were brainstorming. And then, we also have, both for the vision and the mission. And so, hopefully, they, they better represent what was, what the board talked about last month. So, we don't want to have all three of the vision and all two of the mission. So, the goal is to pick one of each and see, I don't know if Barbara or Janet, you guys weighed in heavily, of course, if either of you have anything you want to add.
I think with the vision, and I'm just really speaking to the conversation we had, we were trying very hard to think more aspirationally, more reaching for the stars, more sort of big picture. And I think all of these do that. I have my preference, of course, but I think all three of them do that. We also wanted to tap into the idea that, you know, we're here to serve the community, of course, we're here to serve the community, but an acknowledgement and a recognition that that community is changing all the time, and that we need to be changing with it. And so, when we say, you know, welcoming all for all the community, we need to recognize that the needs of that community are going to change over time, and different kinds of people are going to be here, and that means we need to change as well, so...
And I think I'll speak to the first and second. We were, Stacy and I were fiddling with that with Kate, and we were looking to make sure that we emphasize books and reading. And there is a dynamic to it, where you can picture the spirit of exploration and the joy of books and reading. So, we were looking to be, I think, more experiential whilst encouraging the lifelong learning. So, I, I think that all of them express, you know, the goals. I don't think that any one of them is something that we can live with.
Not going to build a pool based on any of them.
Would you like us to proceed?
So, I mean, does anyone have strong feelings? Did you want to like, do a straw poll?
Well, I'm curious as to the one, the, you know, Barbara, you're on the committee. I mean, do you have a preference or a recommendation for the work?
No, I think the first and second one are very similar. I think there's just a word or two that we were playing with. And I think the third one is, is not dynamic. I think that it's just words that are not, everybody is going to respond to. And equitable access, if I'm 10 years old and I'm looking at it, I'm not sure what that's going to mean to me. So, I, my preference is number one, but it doesn't mean it's the best one.
We would pick one of the three openings.
Right.
Just to be clear.
So, the top one, okay, so we're...
So, it would be igniting a passion for lifelong learning, the spirit of exploration, or to encourage lifelong learning, the spirit of exploration, the joy of, or to inspire lifelong learning. So, you would pick one of the three. Sorry, I was trying to condense things. I should have done them all separately, but I didn't.
So, we're not putting it as it's written, is what you're saying?
Yeah, you would pick one of the openings.
Okay. I think I'm sort of leaning towards two. I know it's sort of the least inspirational of them, or aspirational of them, really, but I don't know if we are really transforming lives. That seems a little...
So, just to be clear, the vision is like where we want to get to? Like, it is the, what are, not what we do day-to-day, but what do we hope to achieve someday?
Okay.
Kind of that, like Janet said, reaching for the stars. What are we trying to do?
I think two is my first choice, second, one would be my second, and three would be my third. Two, one, three, I don't know. But I think they're all...
So, two was one, three was three, one was two.
Right.
I'm the same.
Okay, great, that makes it easier.
One, two, three.
I guess it's from, um, I, two is my first choice, and then one, and then three. Barbara, did you want to?
One, two, three.
I would go with one, but I would like to see one start with to encourage, as opposed to the other two, to grow life, ignite a passion, or to inspire, because you've since given us a choice on how to start it.
So, I'm hearing we're going to eliminate three. And Jay is suggesting to encourage lifelong learning, the spirit of exploration, the joy of books and reading, and the pursuit of information and knowledge for all.
Can I make a case for two?
Absolutely.
And this is one I worked on. I was trying to do a couple of things here. One of, one was to make it shorter. And so, for example, I didn't know that we needed information and knowledge, but one would do. It actually could be knowledge instead of information. And I also had tried to put in the connecting community members to each other and the wider world, and that was inspired by you, Barbara, because you had talked about, so I really was, I liked that, and I was trying to like, bring that into it. And finally, I understand it's a library, joy of books and reading, but the reality is, a library is a holding place for information, in whatever form it may be. Books is one form, and this is a vision statement, and I wanted to capture everything instead of listing like, N-books and audiobooks and this, you know, I wanted to... Speak to the larger purpose of a library beyond physical books on a shelf. So those were. And obviously I can, I like to inspire lifelong learning, so I, I thought that was.
I have a ma- minor question, and this is not my area of expertise. Do we want to say to inspire lifelong learning and connect community? Or is it to inspire lifelong learning? It just grammatically is it, and I'm gonna put that out. There's a lot of other people around this room that are gonna be.
So you would read it like this, to inspire lifelong, to inspire lifelong learning, comma, connecting community members to each other and the wider world. So you're connecting them to each other and you're connecting them to the wider world through.
So it's like.
I agree with her, shouldn't like to inspire and connecting those shouldn't.
You want them to be parallel constructions.
Thank you, yes.
And so.
I don't know, it just seems otherwise connecting with the.
You'd have to change the rest of it then. If you said to inspire lifelong learning and, and connect community, then you'd have to figure out what to do with members to each other and the wider world.
And so the way that it's worded right now is to inspire lifelong learning is implying in order to inspire lifelong learning, we are connecting community members to each other and the wider world. But it's condensing the wording so that it isn't quite as.
Wordy.
So it's sort of like you're saying inspire lifelong learning by connecting community members to each other and the wider world, okay.
You could do that.
You could.
Yeah.
All right, I'm just trying to make sure that I can, that I understand what's being said, okay.
But I know when Janet and I talked, the kind of lifelong learning as the key point, connecting community is important, but that the underlying is the learning and.
And, you know, providing information.
Yep.
That's really what a library does and we wanted to.
It's not just information when we think about all the fiction and that part of it as well. I think that's where the inspirational part and the artistic part of it comes in, so that's.
It could be knowledge either.
Yeah.
And there's really nothing wrong with knowledge and information. I was just trying to like reduce the word.
And I'm, I'm all for that, yeah.
And I would argue that you do learn a lot from fiction.
Yes, you do.
And that you learn a lot by, that you can learn in having fun. You can learn, you know, in going to a program. I, that is also my definition of lifelong learning. To me, every opportu- every interaction is an opportunity to learn.
I love the lifelong learning, I think that's a great phrase, I think. And so I think too, and I was just sort of struggling with them.
We could say by connecting community members, if that was, make it clearer to you. Inspire lifelong learning by connecting community. I was trying to like break it a little, because like one big long sentence is.
Yeah, I think it, it, it sort of balances a little bit better, but again.
Sorry, but.
Grammar is not my thing, so I'm gonna leave that up to other people.
Do people like knowledge more than the word information, information more than the word knowledge?
I like knowledge more than information, but I'm not like.
To me, they're different things.
I think.
Yeah, I prefer, I guess I prefer knowledge to information, but.
Why do we have to choose?
We can say both.
Just trying to reduce the word count.
Yep.
That's all.
There's a lot of words.
It's a lot of words.
So.
I still kind of am stuck on the joy of books and reading. That's when you picture a library in your head. There's still the first image is, I can't wait to touch, feel, see books. Somebody's gonna read me a story, I'm gonna search for something, I, I don't know.
Do you think of that as an aspirational thing or as a thing that we're doing every day?
Yeah. I would say people already think that.
On the mission, we do say that we provide access to books, information programs.
But I'm wondering if.
So maybe that's better placed there.
But maybe it is.
Yeah, maybe it's better.
Provide access to the joy of?
No, I don't think you can get access to.
Okay.
I think you can. I, I, I think you presented, but.
I think we need to focus on the vision before we get to the mission.
Yeah, I, I don't, I think we could sit here for days.
We could. So, and you guys are evenly split, three people thought yay, number one, let's stick with that. Three people thought yay, number two.
So what's Stacy?
So, right, yeah.
They're not that far apart.
And they are not. I, I know that I do not have a vote in this. I will say that fewer words are easier for people to remember. And I, I do not disagree with any of the words that are on this screen. I think that they all are good.
I don't think that they're very different.
So.
I don't think one is more than two, since we're cutting out two of the, aren't we just doing like?
To encourage.
Right, like isn't the top sentence just gonna be two words?
Yeah, so I guess.
I don't think one is longer, I don't know, like I didn't count the words.
If you just eliminate everything except to encourage on that first line.
I do like the, the fact that the second one is about community and the wider world.
That was the part of it, I, I, when I saw this, the first one, I was like, what happened to the community piece? And so I wanted to try to get that in and to like.
I think it could be melded.
This is doing weird things, because I'm trying to edit in PDF and that never makes PDF happy.
I like Janet's comment originally too, she was trying to be simple.
Yeah.
Number two.
We're using AI now?
We should have done that from the start. Why are we doing this, just like, you know, GPT chat?
Bless you. Or the pursuit of information for AI. That would be funny. All right, yeah, they are now almost. The same. This is a Highlander situation though, and there can only be one, for those that watch Highlander. There's literally not a single.
Well, but I like this, in the second one, talking about the wider world.
Yeah.
I, I think that. I think that's relevant and I think that connecting communities. So if there's a way to eliminate parts of number one and.
I think Barbara just switched sides.
I think she did. So what about?
What if we got rid of connecting community matters, get rid of to each other? Oh, no, because it's too, it's.
Yeah, to each other and to the wider world, yeah, right. I did try that out, but then I, I lost the part about them.
And I love the free and open pursuit of knowledge. Yeah, there's a lot of phrasing in there that I think just works.
I changed to inspire, to encourage. I know that that was Jay's recommendation, but I also know that Maura liked inspire.
Oh, no, I don't, I don't have a preference between those.
I would say a number one.
Encourage or inspire, I'm.
How do you feel about encourage on number two, Jay?
I'm fine with encouraging a number two.
I'm actually, now, now number two is actually longer.
I know, it is.
We've added the number one.
You could just say the world.
Can we get rid of, and I know.
Get rid of the word wider.
I would get rid of, and information, I know we were sort of trying to use both, but if we're trying to shorten the words, I'd get rid of information. Or knowledge, one of the two.
I don't know what the free and open pursuit, maybe.
Well, it is free, right, we're free.
Well, we're technically prepaid.
Yeah, true.
If you delete it free and open, just saying through the pursuit of knowledge for all, does it change the meaning?
Yeah, let's do that.
There we go.
Yep, so wait, what if Jay did you?
I said if you delete free and open and just say through the pursuit of knowledge for all, does that change the meaning?
I would say it kind of mutes it a little bit, but I think it still works.
I can say the open pursuit, but I don't know that you'd use free or open.
I like it the way it is.
So.
Jamie, what are your thoughts?
I like one. I, like, one speaks to me, like the, the books, the exploration and the pursuit. To me, that's aspirational, that's what we're trying to do. I think connecting communities is how we do it. Is it? That's like an every, I think that's the state, I don't know, I just.
More mission than vision? You think it's more, now it's getting to.
Right, like that's just how it's like speaks to me. Okay, I'm okay to be all voted.
I hear both arguments, yeah.
And I think, I, I think the two doesn't flow for me. And one does, just, that's just like, it could just be completely subjective and personal.
Dynamic, I can almost, that, that was what just came to my mind is that the dynamic versus some of the. The vernacular. The spirit, I know the spirit of exploration is, but there gets to be a picture in my head of kids coming in and, I don't know. I, I think we can get caught in there all. Which good.
At the end of the day. Is there either of these that someone cannot live with?
Either one.
Okay, I'm gonna suggest that we go back and we look at the mission, we look at the other thing. And then we're gonna just give ourselves a few minutes of space and then come back. I honestly, I think either of those work. I think that, you know, realistically, they are both longer, so we're not gonna be. Like, we're gonna be shortening things because there is a lot of words and that is okay. And that just means that we'll be chunking things from a marketing perspective. So looking at the mission, we have two and, and they are almost the same. So I guess, do people have feelings of one over the other?
When we were looking at the mission, one of the research articles that I read strongly recommended using the term every day. Which means that this is something you can expect, this is what you can anticipate, and this is what we do. It's not on a special occasion or a special program. They talked about it being a, a statement that everybody can expect a certain thing when they come to the library.
I was wondering whether that's there, sorry.
Yeah, me too. Yeah, it seemed a little.
It's so not mission statement, I mean, it doesn't introduce itself in the same way.
I like two a little bit more, but I don't know if it's the, the fact that build community is out front or if it's the fact that I'm not crazy about every day, but I like having build community first.
Well, I'm gonna, I did some work on two and again, in one, I didn't see anything about community. So I, again, I was trying to like fold that back in. And again, I have to say word cutting, I was trying to like tighten the.
So it sounds like people are, of the people we've heard from, leaning towards two?
I'm torn because I don't really have a strong opinion either way.
Okay. Do you feel strongly opposed to either?
No.
Stay stopped, we gotta, right? I do find that every day for me is redundant because a mission statement is about what you do every day.
That's by definition, that's what a mission statement is, so.
So I also get that people don't always understand what a mission statement is. And, but I think, so that for me, but I also.
Yeah, I agree, and I like the inclusion of community. I think that is something that we have to remind ourselves of too, that that is kind of. I think that is what the librarians do here, the staff does.
Hashtag incubator. Take everything, really. I'm also not supposed to speak in hashtags according to my 12-year-old niece. So, so it sounds like two? Okay, see, look at that, one choice, done. Now I'm gonna move down, okay. And Janet pointed out, this originally I had typed it wrong, or it, Amanda had moved it and then we didn't.
Header hadn't changed, that's all, I mean.
Yeah, so, well, so.
Well, I, I thought that you had wanted to change to to enhance operational excellence.
And I had switched, I thought we had not done that one. Janet and I talked about this one. Instead talked about, the, so previously, number two was embed equity, diversity and inclusion in operations. And as you remember, we had a robust discussion about it. And so it was how do we convey what we're trying to do? And Amanda Standifer had recommended like, well, it's more like about operational excellence. And that one, I had forgot, I didn't change that on the overarching one here when I sent it in the board packet. Instead, I said build an inclusive culture, which I put on the, this one. And, and so I do want to say that we still have embed equity, diversity and inclusion in operations. We've just moved it to a goal. Because I do think that that is still really important and I know that the board wanted to also reflect that. So ultimately, it is about the strategic direction and what do we want to call it? Does build an inclusive culture reflect that? Does enhance operational excellence? I do feel like the enhanced operational excellence is a little bit more business speaky. I know that they're all not perfect, but.
I like the build an inclusive culture.
Yeah, you're, okay, so, so the recommendation then would be build an inclusive culture as our strategic direction. I moved embed equity, diversity and inclusion to a goal. And then I moved. This goal, improve access to facilities, programs and materials to better serve all population under create spaces to belong, because that used to be under number two, but then it kind of didn't really fit anymore. But which I still think the accessibility piece we've talked about, that staff talked about a lot, was really important. So, end of the day, only thing that changed is the heading for the. Build an inclusive culture and the addition of a goal of embed equity, diversity and inclusion in operations. Does that align with what?
Sure.
Okay, that means two decisions down. And now, all we have to do. Is decide, do we want to do number one? Or number two?
I don't. What's this better?
I go with number two.
You can live with it totally.
Absolutely.
Too bad I like them both.
Yeah. Nice to have a choice.
Is that B N?
No, I'm good with two, I, I just went back and forth over the replacing the comma with a word by.
English is not my first language, but this does not look grammatically correct to me.
It is grammatically correct, I can promise you, but, but it, but.
I have a program that tells me when I don't do things grammatically correctly. And it pops up with a red exclamation point and a leaf pops up next to it and it tells me what I should be doing. So we do not see the leaf or the angry red exclamation point, which means that it is happy.
Except that it's, it's, it's not happy if it does, if it's awkward. You don't want people saying, what does, what does that mean?
I think it would, putting in the word. I think it would, um, putting in the word by would, I think, clarify that. It is, this is correct, but if, but communication is about understanding, so. What do you think, Jay?
I can either way, I just, I feel like it's more of a, the result of the lifelong learning is connecting community. Not the other way around, and I think we put the by as as encouraging lifelong learning by connecting the community. So connecting community results in a lifelong.
You are correct, and that is why I did not use the word by. But.
Well, then should it be? Should it be and, like, the way it read with the by, I think it sounds better with the by, but it does sound like the, what we're doing is encouraging life learn learning and the method we're using is connecting community members.
The one slight thing I would say about using and there is you've got and twice and it can just sound kind of.
Oh, yeah, it's profound, I like the two ands.
Yeah.
I actually think, Kate, if you're gonna change, it would be connecting memories to each other in the world. No, can't do the emphasis.
No, 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 no.
Through the pursuit of knowledge for all by encouraging lifelong learning, I mean, that's almost how you would do it.
Well, I'm not sure that the lifelong learning connects the community member. I think it's just, we encourage lifelong learning, we also connect the community. That's, those are two things we do, they don't necessarily connect to each other.
Then it should be encourage lifelong learning, comma, connect community members to the.
See, then you stumble over the to each other in the world. I ran into that too, connect, you know, lifelong learning, comma. Connect community members, comma, and connect them to also to the world.
Connect to each other in the world. Comma.
And maybe skip to the encourage lifelong learning. To connect community members to each other in the world through the pursuit of maybe information and knowledge for all.
I think they encourage the lifelong learning is important.
Supposed to be aspirational.
Yeah.
Yeah, I had to put people back to number one somehow.
The truth comes out.
I'm kidding. I don't think it worked either way.
To encourage lifelong learning, comma. Connect community. Oh, wait. I, I think she should.
To encourage lifelong.
So, that's what's the problem is with one, to encourage lifelong learning. Comma, the spirit of, are you encouraging this, you don't encourage the joy of books and reading. You encourage someone to experience the joy. That's what's bugging me about number one, I think, again, it's sort of just a, does that make sense to me?
Parallel construction?
Yeah, I feel like it's suffering from that. So to encourage lifelong learning, the spirit of exploration. Do you encourage, you don't encourage the joy of books and reading, you encourage.
Experience.
You encourage reading. You don't encourage the joy of books, do you?
We don't want a paragraph, that, that's the thing.
We don't, but I'm just, I, again, I think that's what's bugging me about one is that it doesn't, it, there's not a clear structure. I think our structure needs to be simplified. Chat G P T was confused about what it meant.
Did it say, I'm confused?
It asked, what does this mean to encourage lifelong learning, connecting community members to each other and the world through the pursuit of knowledge? And chat G P T came back and said, this statement emphasizes the importance of promoting continuous learning throughout one's life.
That's true.
Suggests that by fostering connections among community members and encouraging them to explore and acquire knowledge, individuals can engage more deeply with their community and the broader world. In essence, it champions the idea that learning is not limited to formal education, but is a lifelong journey that enriches both individuals and communities.
And was that which way, which way was the individual?
The second one, with the comma.
With the comma, but no by.
Correct. Do you want me to try it with by?
Jeff, you'd chat G P T, you like the comma. What is it now?
It was the tough one, it was the number one that I was, I, I was, I liked number one, I think, again, I'm just struggling with simplifying the structure of it. That's, I think it seemed.
Cause you're saying, like, right now, what you're trying to say, Maura, is that this doesn't.
That's right.
Yeah, I don't feel like we, you encourage the joy of books and reading.
Right, that's just how you're reading it, is that?
You encourage people to read. I don't think you encourage the joy of books and reading. You can encourage people to find joy in the books and reading, in books and reading.
Remember that that first one has not one word about community in it.
Yep.
So.
And for this particular library, I think community does resonate.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But this is, that's helpful, the bullet points are sort of helpful for sort of figuring out what we're saying.
We make it really, really long.
I thought we're going with two.
Yeah, we shifted back to one now, I thought we'd sort of said two and we're gonna.
We, I'm just floating between them when people say things.
I like the way you've done that, to encourage lifelong learning, to connect community members to each other in the world, to offer the pursuit of knowledge for all. I like the way you've written two, where it's like.
Oh, I was just trying to make them parallel.
I know, and I like it that way. I think it's easier to read and easier to understand.
Can it be that way?
I mean, we can do whatever we want. You guys are in charge.
You know, vision.
Do you think to pursue knowledge for all?
Oh, well, sure, if you wanna reduce.
Well, but that makes it sound like we are pursuing the knowledge for all, it's like, really, we're letting them do that. We're, they have the opportunity here to pursue knowledge and we, we offer to people.
Encourage.
We can encourage and inspire lifelong learning, how about we inspire lifelong learning and we encourage the pursuit of knowledge for all? We can be aspirational all over the place. Good to us.
And if you wanna, you could say, you could, you could change it slightly, the Northbrook Library will inspire lifelong learning, connect community members to each other in the world, encourage the pursuit of knowledge for all. Then you could take two, two, two out.
Okay.
Will.
This means I get to use bullet points, which I love.
Inspire lifelong learning. Community members to each other in the world. There you go.
Works for me.
I, I, I have a good one from chat G P T.
I think we did colon and then semicolons. You're gonna do your bullet points.
I do, for the bullet points, lifelong learning, exploration and connection through books and knowledge.
Again?
It kept exploration. Lifelong and learning, exploration and connection through books and knowledge.
I, I'm, I'm not a, I'm, G P, we have issues between us. I don't always, I, I think they churn out a lot of gobbledygook.
There might be some destruction in lifelong learning with chat G P T.
Yeah.
It wouldn't be a semicolon because it is not a, um, full sentence. You'd only use it, so it's, right? It's inspire, connect and encourage. You don't have a separate noun for each, so you wouldn't use, you would only use.
Do you have to say and and have a comma when you're doing bullet points?
Oh, no, you don't, I just put it in cause Jay said that we.
I think we could maybe worry about punctuation later, but.
Yep, alright, um, if the board is okay with it, I will prefer with Linda on the best way on whether or not to add the and, and semicolons.
Well, I think we wanna go without the and if we can.
Okay, no and.
Well, you already have an and, it's just in a different place.
Okay, so this is what I have, is this what everyone thinks is good?
Can I cha- challenge the encourage with enable? Like, like I keep coming back to this idea, like, we're not, we're not the leader of other people. What we're doing is like, we house all these stuff, we're trying, we gave them like the tools to do what they wanna do.
I like enable.
I like enable.
Yeah, I like it, yeah.
Just for the encourages, to replace the encourage, yeah, I love it.
Alright, so we have the Northbrook Public Library will inspire lifelong learning, connect community members to each other in the world, enable the pursuit of knowledge for all.
Love it.
Very nice.
Great.
And it has bullet points.
Everyone's happy.
Need a formal vote.
I'm fine.
Oh, yeah, we still need a formally, you guys need to approve the strategic plan with the mission. No, you were asking, do we need a formal?
I wasn't sure, yeah.
Yeah, yes, if you are happy with it.
Here's the gavel. Okay, is there a motion to approve the strategic plan as amended during our meeting?
Can I joyfully move?
We have a joyful motion.
And a gleeful second.
I'm gonna have to ask for a voice vote. So, I don't have to ask for it, but if that's what Kate has, we can ask for it, we don't need to do a roll call. So, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Yay, we have a strategic plan! This is so exciting. I can't even, it's so exciting.
Please make sure the minutes reflect the joyful. Right, so technically the next item on the agenda is executive director evaluation, but we are going to hold a closed session at the end, so that is gonna be tabled until we get to the end. New business. We're going to have a little bit of a presentation on the automated material handle reconfiguration. Anna, will you be making that presentation?
I guess.
Presentation so much. There's nothing, gonna be nothing on the screen.
Oh, we just had to look at our information in our packets then.
Yeah, so, um, the circulation department has noticed that they've had some jamming issues with the M H. Kelly, jump in whenever.
Correct.
I am not saying something correctly, so Kelly worked, um, with Biblioteca and O S G to try to find a solution and then they got me involved and we reached out to product architecture and Pepper. And basically the solution is the, the book drop right now falls in the middle of the first belt and it needs to move back to the back of the first belt so that the books have a longer lead time before they drop onto the conveyor belt. So, um, we've worked with product architecture and Pepper to come up with a design and it's just basically moving the door and the curved wall into the circulation workroom. Pepper says it'll take about a week to do this work. We are using a lot of in-house material that we have that was left over from the project, so we're not having to buy a lot of stuff, it's, it's mostly labor to do this work.
Here's the diagram.
Looks great.
The cost, Anna, is eighteen thousand.
You know, this, in, now that I, I, I think I've missed one thing, the Biblioteca's cost to come out is not included in this.
Correct.
Sorry, I, so, I just thought of that.
That's the Pepper cost.
This is the Pepper cost, yeah.
I did have one question when I read this and it said not to exceed.
Yes.
But then it said, but it doesn't actually include contingency and it said it's a bid base amount and it said it was gonna be done on an hourly basis and there seemed to be a long list of exclusions on page fifty. And so I did wonder, how do we know it's not gonna exceed? Guess I'm out.
I, I mean, they, they have, they've done the research and this is, that's what they said, so I mean, I don't. I mean, I can add a contingency into the project so that.
Well, if it exceeded, you'd have to come back to get approvals, right?
Correct.
That's true.
Yeah.
And then you'd have to explain why it exceeded.
But also, I mean, let's be honest, we don't, i- if it exceeds, we want them to be able to finish the project and not leave the circulation workroom open. So I guess maybe you guys should give us a little bit of leeway and tell us what the contingents, what type of a contingency you would be willing to let us work with, knowing that Biblioteca's costs are not in here. And Kelly, do you remember what they said?
Are we only including the Pepper construction contract though and leaving the Biblioteca separate?
I was not. I forgot to include Biblioteca.
I knew still that part.
So we will not be bringing it back because here's the thing. We wanna try to get this project done before summer reading starts, so.
How much is Biblioteca gonna?
So, to reconfigure the entire machine, which is not what needs to happen at this point, was five thousand dollars. So I would anticipate it would be closer to a thousand.
So if we were to say not to exceed twenty thousand including Biblioteca, would that be within reasonable reason?
Or if we say, if we approve the Pepper, do we have to approve it if it's less than five thousand? Do we have to approve the Biblioteca part?
I would consider this part of the same project, so I don't think that it would be, I mean, it does fall under, like, in terms of the policy, like, yes, I could approve that, but I see this as connected.
I would ask for an eighteen hundred dollar contingency for Pepper. And then.
Two thousand for Biblioteca.
Two thousand for Biblioteca, so another thirty eight hundred to the eighteen thousand.
So not to exceed twenty two thousand.
Anna?
Yes.
I am knowing that that raises things to twenty two thousand, which is coming awfully close to twenty five thousand. I'm concerned that we are approaching that bidding threshold, not, you know, I did not know about the Biblioteca stuff.
Yeah, I, right, it's.
Oh, good, I think though that this is something that we wanna make sure that we are considering all of it. I, I'm gonna actually recommend and, I know Circa's not gonna like this, that we bring you back an appropriate proposal that has all the information you need to make the decision and that we not make a decision on this tonight.
So that's gonna put you outside of your timeline.
It is. And I think that we wanna make sure that we are not only following the laws, but that we've thought through and make sure that we have the accurate information to get it. I mean, we know that this was new construction, I don't think a contingency is gonna be a problem cause it was literally built three years ago. And so if there is something that comes up, I kinda feel like, well, Pepper, what did you do wrong when you were overseeing the subs in twenty twenty one? But I think we don't have an actual price for Biblioteca and what if they do come back with a five thousand dollar ask for this? I think that would be inappropriate, I don't think that would be okay. And this is something that I feel like was their mistake in twenty twenty one that we are graciously saying, well, we know that you designed this this way with our architects and now it isn't working and now we're gonna pay you more. I just feel that there is, yes, a timeliness, but also it feels like we shouldn't rush if we do not have all of the information. But of course, if the board feels comfortable, I.
I'm not worried about the twenty five thousand, cause either you're over or you're not. So, if we're not over the threshold requiring bidding, then we're not over the threshold. I think that the bigger issue is the contingency and Biblioteca, you have a four thousand dollar cushion to get in both. Two thousand on the contingency, there's gonna be a lot more, I mean, that's, that's going beyond a week of construction.
Right, I mean, and that's a ten percent contingency, which is already high.
Is Biblioteca a sub of Pepper or they're just?
No, they're.
Yeah, that's what I thought, so, I mean, there, it's one issue, but I don't think if they're. So the, the issue is if it's over twenty five thousand, it has to go out to bid.
Correct.
But it doesn't seem like the Biblioteca wouldn't go out, like, that's a, Biblioteca is gonna do that part of it and so the only part that would go out to bid would be the Pepper thing?
The whole thing as a package deal.
Correct, yeah.
But Biblioteca, they're moving a piece of equipment from this spot to that spot, right?
No, actually, that's not what they would be doing, Biblioteca would have to disconnect the first belt. That's all Biblioteca is going to do. That's all Biblioteca is going to do, and then reconnect it at the end of the project.
Yeah, that's the part that.
Yeah, just the belt, they're not gonna, they're not gonna move the return drop, they're just gonna.
No, 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 I'm saying the belt.
Yeah, the first belt, yes. They would disconnect it, and then they would re, reset it up when Pepper was done with the construction.
The return drop is moving, the belt is not moving.
Biblioteca does not need to.
Yes. Can we take a field trip?
I'm, well, I was, I think you can take a field trip. I also was gonna just bring up the drawing.
The belt stays in the same place, it's the return drop that moves.
You're saying that belt that is in the middle here?
Hang on, sorry, I'm just trying to get it open.
The belt right there.
This stays where it is. This is the return drop, and that's moving from here to here, that's not a belt, it's just the slot.
Okay, so, the, um, you can't really see. The green book drop is moving, that requires nothing from Biblioteca.
Right.
The belt that is right here, that needs to be moved away while construction is happening, is what Anna and Kelly are referring to.
Right.
Yeah, but the piece next to the belt, in between the belt and the wall, doesn't that move, isn't that Biblioteca?
You mean this part right here?
No, Pepper can move that, they just have to move it, like.
It's not actual repair.
It's not connected in any way to the AMH.
It just sits over it?
It just sits over it.
Oh.
The books go boom.
It's the what?
Boom.
Yeah.
And the last time, in twenty-twenty-one, when you put this together, these are the same two firms that collaborated to do it.
Well, the architect, Pepper was our construction manager, and so I don't remember who was the sub for the, like, drywall and book drop installation.
Yeah, but they were just following the design, they weren't.
Correct, yeah.
In the original installation, the mesh with the drawings, the AMH was configured differently, going in, going into the room and not using the space in a effective manner.
It was going straight from there?
So, we had asked Biblioteca if this configuration would work, and they said it could, there might be a few issues, but it could. So, we tried it, and what happened was, is it didn't, and so, that's where we're at, right? I mean.
Yeah, the original configuration, was it a curved wall or a straight wall?
Curved.
Yeah, the orig, the original configuration, the book drop was here, the, this piece went this way. Then you had your conveyor belt, so like, this all is like over here, and then it went closer to the manager's office.
So, like, this is where the blue.
And so, where we have a big walkway right now for the carts to go through, that was all machine.
And it was too narrow to actually, with the amount of carts we were gonna be moving, it was.
And then, can you move that up, Kate?
It doesn't go any up, it's just.
No, I wanna go back this way.
Move the drawing up.
Oh, oh.
So, basically, all of this space was empty and unused, and we couldn't. It wasn't a good use of the space, so we asked if they could reconfigure it.
But we made a decision, so, I mean, we took the chance.
Yeah.
We, we did take the chance with them saying this.
Could work. I mean, they were giving us a fifty.
I, I also feel like they, like, in the designs, it was poorly, like, it didn't look that way on the drawings, and then when it got installed, it was like, wait a minute. And the AMH was severely delayed by like, what was it, four or five months? And so then, it wasn't.
About the contingency and the stretching, even though you're on a tight timeline.
Yeah, I mean, we're on a tight timeline, because that is what we have decided. And yes, it is, it, there is an impact, and I also think that waiting until the end of summer reading would not be the end of the world. This is a preference, not a requirement, and I know, Anna, you've talked with Kim more. I know Kim's preference was to do it before summer reading, because it is our busiest time of the year. And so, I'm also concerned if there are additional contingencies that we need to bring back to the board, or if there is other things, that also will sneak into summer reading, which is challenging.
Well, if we did approve it, when would the construction start?
If you approved it tonight?
Yeah.
We would do it in May.
Right, but do you have an idea which week in May?
Yes, I can tell you, hold on.
It's supposed to be one week of work.
I understand, I understand.
And so, we would want it to be done and everything put back together by June first, which is when summer reading starts.
Do you feel strongly about what you're saying?
I feel that we often are like, well, we just have to get it done, and it's always good to just pause and make sure it really is.
Right, but right now, we're already meeting on May, calendar seventh, is it?
Yep. Are you suggesting approving then?
Well, we could. So, if you need to get more data and then present to us on May seventh, we could call a meeting.
I mean, we have a meeting, we have to do a meeting anyway because of.
I mean, the only, the only data we would be gathering is Biblioteca's cost.
And if there needs to be a contingency.
Well, I mean, I think we would just put ten percent on the total project.
You know, I think if you could, assuming that Biblioteca doesn't get you too close to twenty-five thousand, yeah.
Right.
But, I mean, can you?
Okay, May twelfth.
So, if we were to prove it on May seventh, assuming you have all the data by then, that gives you time to theoretically get them in here on May twelfth?
He said he needed a week to mobilize.
Which one would be like May?
So, that, that would be cutting it close, but we could.
Contact him now and say, the board asked that we get additional information from Biblioteca, so they can try and approve it on May seventh, presuming the.
Yeah, I could, I can do that.
Yeah, because then, I think that would put you in line to keep on task while still addressing Kate's concern.
Yes, I, I mean, I, I can reach out to Pepper and do that.
Okay, so let's table this until our meeting.
May seventh, and I, we will get costs from Biblioteca. I apologize for not getting those numbers.
I've been thinking of the fourteenth, and we're having nominating, I'm like that.
Okay, so that was the first item of new business. The second item of new business is to review the facility master plan. This is more of a discussion than anything else. So, as you already remember, when we did the tour, we talked a lot then about the facilities plan, and, you know, what was not done over the course of the past four years, or three and a half years. And so, the question becomes, what do we do with the facility master plan in order to begin moving forward with some of these projects? And so, getting Anna, can kind of, in a minute, go through what the projects are, but essentially, the three kind of thoughts as to what the paths are are, one, live with the existing master plan and just start moving forward. Two, revise the master plan, making changes to the twenty-seventeen plan, but keeping the bones of the projects the same. The idea being saying, okay, we know that there's been changes. How do we revive what we have in order to begin moving forward quickly? And then, three, scrap what we have and do a new master plan with a full kind of design process, a focus on usage of change, or how usage has changed over the past four years in light of the pandemic, and some of the issues that arose during the pandemic, and what that means, so that it gets broken into the plan from the ground up. Three kind of paths are quick path, number one, medium path, number two, and long path, number three, I would say, because number three, you know, we're not gonna be able to start anything until we have a plan in place, and then we have to start, once we have the plan in place, going to, you know, in succession. So, having said that, I mean, Kate and Anna, do you two wanna go through what the?
I thought I'd just walk through, since we, you know, it has been a few years since we've looked more in detail at the master plan. And so, Anna and I put together this that just goes through. Anna has updated the numbers, so everything that is in here includes rates of inflation that we factor into the facility plan. So, these, if you were to go back and look at the original master plan, these numbers are higher, because we're assuming, assuming a four percent year-over-year inflation. So, that is why where those numbers are. The three projects that have been completed have the actual numbers that Anna has put in there. So, basically, the first floor, we're done. We've completed everything that was in the plan and are in good shape. I have this, I put a separate photo in of each, just so you could more easily see without the shading, kind of what some of the design elements were. Number two, we did do study rooms, so yay, and they're very heavily used. We were, we also, basically, the entire rest of the second floor, we were going to start on the third floor and then with project five, and then move down and do project two in two different spot in two different years. This was first gonna be creating a middle and high school space, over getting rid of the quiet reading room, moving that space there, reducing the footprint that currently reference has with the tables and chairs along the windows, et cetera, and then redesigning the youth services department. After we moved the teen and tween collections out, then that would give space to redesign the youth services department. There would be a wall added in between youth, you can kind of see it. It's tiny, but it's there, our wall down there.
Can you show me again where that wall is?
It is right here, it is like right, right at the end of the study rooms. And, and the study rooms do occupy the same footprint that we had in the plan. So, this plan could still be realized. And then, so then the third project would be focusing on the rest of the reference area, all of the adult nonfiction, the computer rooms. It involves creating a computer lab over here, instead of kind of in the center area. The other project on the second floor would be the core. Most of this is staff space. This grayed out space right here is the collaboratory. This was technically not part of the master plan. We did that before we had the master plan in place. And so, this is an area that we know has a lot of staff space, a lot of community use space. We built another conference room and a multipurpose room for, again, more, assuming more patron engagement, but also use for staff, and then having more interconnectedness between the different staff areas on the second floor. This does not take into account the merging of fiction and media and the reference department into adult services. So, we now have staff on the second floor, in the reference staff space, on the third floor, in what was formerly the multimedia manager's office, and then also in the back corner, which houses event production staff as well as adult services staff. So, the staff in that department are spread in three separate staff, in three separate staff areas. The project that we had paused was our, our staff space on the second, on the third floor. We had started doing it, it was in the middle of the pandemic. I was super burnt out, and it was very, it was what, what should have been, we thought, a pretty simple project, ended up being way more complicated, because as you'll note, they don't have any ceilings, and there's just a lot. And so, I came in twenty-twenty-one, and I asked the board to pause the project and that we would revisit this at a later date in time, which I guess technically, we could say is now, but I'm not suggesting we just start this project again. And then, the rest of that space was gonna be done, you know, revised after we updated the youth services area. So, essentially, to go back to kind of the original plan, it would have been the fiction and media staff space, middle and high school, followed by the remainder of youth, then back up to the third floor, then back down, doing all the patron spaces first, and ending with the core and the interior of the staff spaces on the second floor. One of the things that was also part of the fifth floor was moving all of the magazines up to the third floor, as well as still having quite a large footprint for AV materials. Our AV materials still circ very heavily, with the exception of physical audiobooks, which we're continuing to reduce that collection. I do see eventually that, you know, changing, but for right now, I'm continually surprised by how many people check out music CDs. It's kind of amazing. But I do think that it warrants a deeper look into, to make sure that we are adequately assessing what our current and future needs are in terms of space allocation. You know, we increased our large print collection space in this plan. I still think that is gonna be very much needed. We know that there are more and more people looking for spaces to come, to study, to work. Do we need to allocate more space for that? So, in the, oh, did I, oh, I did it as a memo, right, right. In the memo that I included with the board packet, I do mention some other considerations that I think it is important to note. We know that how people have used spaces has changed during the pandemic. When it was, you know, like, twenty-twenty-two, even twenty-twenty-three, we still were kind of like, is this a short-term change? Is it something that people are gonna continue? I think it's, it's pretty clear now that people are using the spaces in new ways, and this is probably going to continue, not forever, because nothing is forever, but for the foreseeable future. We also know that construction costs have risen dramatically, and that supply chain issues are still very much present. So, I think another thing to consider is, is how we've broken up the projects? Does that still make sense from a cost perspective? Would we be able to realize more cost savings if we were to look at combining things more? That is something that, you know, we have not run any numbers on, again, because we just wanted to start talking, a big picture idea with the board. I also, you know, mentioned the staff spaces, and I also think just like, how we are looking at things because of how the world has changed. This was designed in twenty-seventeen, and at the time, it felt very fresh and vibrant. I think the question is, is it still feeling that way? Not as much, I still think that there are things that absolutely are workable, but I don't, I also don't want us to lose out on an opportunity. When we're thinking about construction, I'm always thinking about not only the now, but twenty years from now, because realistically, the last time we did some updates to some of these spaces was in nineteen ninety-nine, and so.
Okay, my question for you.
Yeah.
And this is purely as, you know, an administrator who is gonna oversee, as it is, one, two, three, four, five, six separate construction projects over, you know, seven years.
Yeah.
Would you rather have six separate construction projects over seven years, or one or two big construction projects in one or two years?
Yes, one or two.
Okay, so your preference really then is?
And, and it's not just mine, I would say Anna's as well. We also have a lot of projects that we're working on that are smaller projects, but that are also coming up this year, so if we could.
Well, here, here's kind of where I'm leaning, Kate, which is, if we go route one, we're staying with seven projects over seven years.
Yeah.
If we go route two, we're probably densing seven projects into four or five, realistically, and you're still doing it over five years. If you go route three, which is just start from scratch, you might be able to get to one or two big construction projects, but that probably requires having a six- to twelve-month period where the library is under massive construction, and you're having either work through it in the space as it's being constructed around you, or finding alternate space to go to like they did in, you know, nineteen. or finding alternate space to go to like they did in, you know, 1990, whatever it was, 97, while the building is redesigned.
And Sunset seems pretty happy where they are, so I doubt that that space is going to be.
You would have to find a space, we know there's lots of vacant space around Northbrook, so I don't know that finding a space in Northbrook will be a problem.
Yeah.
But, I mean, you're, you're talking in a year or two from now, at best, probably two to three years from now, getting to that point where you're moving into some other space, doing a longer project. Spinning, how much do we have, Anna, do you know off the top of your head, sitting in the CIF for this?
It's in the.
I mean, we have, the, the way it's planned, it's like there's a 1.5 million bond. We might need to take out bonds in like three or four years.
Right now, we're sitting on four and a half.
Yeah, I think there's like four and a half in there, yeah.
How long do we have until we have to spend it?
About four and a half, we've spent the.
Yeah, we've spent all the money on, maybe not on master plan projects, but on other projects, so we're okay.
We don't have to worry about spending the four and a half.
Correct, we do not need to worry about spending that.
Okay, so you're spending, sitting on four and a half, you probably haven't projected out yet, but on our current trajectory, that would probably go up a little bit?
Yeah.
Okay, so you might have, you know, by the time you get to a five sitting in here, in the construction improvement fund?
Correct.
Our capital improvement fund, so you're saying on top of that, you might need another million in bond? In the meantime, though, we won't really have paid down much of the existing bonds, so.
Every year, we budget to put a minimum of $425,000, like right now, that's what we're saying from our operating fund.
So we might have five and a half if it's.
Right.
And we could also look at increasing that number.
That inquiry requires increasing the, you know, levy.
No, I'm not suggesting increasing, I mean, if we.
Without adjusting the budget otherwise, you'd have to increase the levy.
Yes.
So, and that, that's kind of part of the discussion because it's all going to tie in.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't know if you've started thinking through, and by you, I don't mean you, Kate individually, but you, Kate, with management, you're, Anna and Kelly and your heads of your departments, some of these issues.
We have not talked with the department managers about this, because I wanted to get a sense from the board what they were looking for.
It seems like we can't really figure out how the, the when of doing it, whether and how we group them until we decide the what. So I guess are we, it sounds like you had some doubts about the master plan as it was, even without the sequencing of it, is that true?
Well, the concern is if we go forward with the master plan right now, that it hasn't been updated, it's not going to be fit our needs. So as they, as we go into each piece, right? So when you start to fix a media staff space and you start looking at, okay, we need to bring in someone to design it. We need to bring some, you know, do we need to revise the design that's there now?
Right.
Or do we go exactly with design there now and hope that it works? You know, that's kind of the concern, I think, you want us to hope that it works. I think we want to make sure it's designed effectively, and so the question is, how much design do we do, to me? Do we do a little bit of design, saying, okay, we're just going to tweak it a little bit and then get plans and then go to bid? Or do we say, okay, let's, you know, redevelop the whole thing, that's really where it comes down to. It sounds from Kate like she thinks we need to do some pretty major redesigning.
The staff space thing is the thing that I keep coming back to in my head, that I can't wrap my head around how, how to, like, without doing a, you know, massive pause and rethink. But I also, I don't know if that's just because I can't think of a way, or if it's an actual problem.
We saw that you've got a big space that's kind of not really being used effectively, out in the open by the cert desks. You know, the second desk, that's.
Right, that's there.
We know that the third floor, you know, the space that's, the desks and, you know, for staff is.
The bowling alley, as I like to call it.
Poorly designed and not appreciated by the staff, they'd like to have a better space.
I think that that's fair too.
And then when we're down on the second floor, you know, we know that we need to revise the space where all the desks are because people are having to move the tables in order to, you know.
Oh, yeah, because of the outlets, the lack of outlets.
That's just basic, I mean, but let alone putting into place the new areas for the teens and the young, you know, youth and the high schoolers and everything, so that you get it to be more effective for doing what you want to do. And then when you go and look at, you know, the interior space, we saw how tight and compact it was in some of the areas for the graphic design and all that. So there is a lot of work there that needs to be rethought and redeveloped probably. You know, we put it on hold for three and a half years while doing construction was a bit difficult and we didn't want to, you know, rush to do it. So I don't know that we want to rush to just start doing it when we don't feel confident that what we would start doing is going to be effective and a good use of funds.
Is there anything in this plan that would still?
Oh, yeah. Oh, I mean, for sure, I mean, there are parts of each of these that I think, you know, like in the youth area, I think having a, a better kind of, right now, there's very much a runway and so it's easy for kids to just. And, and I think that now the way that this plan is structured, things are more tucked back. We've moved the service desk, so people are also approaching it sooner, you know, moving between and teen areas out because they kind of already feel like, well, I don't want to be in the youth area, right? Like, so I think some of those things are already, the concepts behind them, like maybe exact placement isn't, you know, and that always changes during any time we launch a project. I think that creating more interconnected staff spaces where people can more easily, like right now, in order for me to go to the bathroom, and I'm not complaining, but just to like, I have to leave staff areas, go out into public areas, and usually I just use the public bathroom because it's easier than going downstairs, we only have staff bathrooms on the first floor. And I don't mind, but also when we think about kind of like, if staff need to do something, my husband always teases me, he's like, why? I'll text him, like, I'm on my way home, and I'd be like, we live five minutes away, why did it take you 20 minutes to get home? And it's like, well, because the, when I leave, like, I'll stop and say hi to people at the desk, I'll run into patrons, I'll, and I love doing that, I don't mind, he minds, and he never watches this, so he'll never hear this. And, and so like, there is also that of like, oh, hey, I want to talk to someone in another area, I have to go out into the public area, back into a staff area. From that perspective, it is not ideal and this offers more of that. Would this be the exact, is this still the perfect way? I, I don't know, I think it's pretty good. It creates more spaces for patrons to connect and gather, I think that that's good, do we need more than that? Maybe, I don't know, I mean, I thought we were building an abundance of study rooms. I'm like, we built enough so that we're never going to have to turn people away.
I just, I only ask, and this is absolutely not my area of expertise, but I wondered if there are things that are still okay? Could, could we move ahead on some of those while we redesign the parts that aren't?
I see what you're saying, okay. I think that there are pieces of each, it would mean doing like a more of a subset, like we did with the study rooms. And I think it would lock us in if in redesigning the other spaces, we just determined that, oh, actually, we don't want to put a computer lab.
Figure out that we can, if we figure out that we can, like, revisit the master plan design in X number of months. Setting that aside, it's not going to take years to, to do that, so sort of giving ourselves a deadline for that. I wouldn't necessarily move forward with anything until we had a master, a master plan that people were signed off on.
Yeah, I, I honestly think that, to do it quickly, we would still be looking at getting it completed within the next, you know, nine months, six to nine months, so you're, you're looking at having that done by year end.
Yeah, and then starting.
Then going into, okay, now let's start the construction projects next year at the earliest, which, these are big construction projects, so they're going to require hiring an architect, do the plans, and then going to bid and, you know, getting the contractor and then coming in. So you're likely looking at fall 2025 before you start anything at the earliest.
Yes, that is accurate.
I have no objection to that, I just, I'm saying let's be realistic about, you know, a timeline, and that might be an aggressive timeline.
I think that that is, yes, that would be, I think, the, if everything, if every other project moved perfectly, if we got everything done, that that would be. But I also think that's why it's important to start talking now, so that we're not.
And that prevents, we don't have any surprises like a boiler not working or, you know, a handling unit on the roof not working, you know, things like that.
You're going to give Anna a heart attack.
No, but it's true, I mean, we have these unforeseen issues that come up from time to time.
I mean, we could always build a new building, I'm just kidding.
Yeah, I almost brought that up on this a lot of time and you poo-pooed it, I just want to point that out.
So it was like $37 million.
So are we just giving our thought or?
It's a discussion.
Okay. Yeah, so that I know what do Anna and I need to do moving forward, do we want to tweak? Do we want to start fresh? Do we want to, you know, try and make parts of this work? It's more just where, what would the board like to see? And also like, what is realistic? Anna could list all of the projects that we have in the next year. But we've already been, the meeting has already been going pretty long, so there's, there's a lot of construction stuff that we're working on.
Let's go around the table and just let everyone have an opportunity to say their thoughts as to what they would think would be the proper course of action.
I think that it's been a while since we've looked at the master plan and it warrants looking at it again. I think it would be a little foolish to rush into a construction project without having to look over it again. That's my feeling on it, I mean, just looking at it now, I'm sort of like, well, why are they doing this and why are they doing that? And I don't even like, so I've got a ton of questions about it and I've, you know, looked at it before, so.
I agree wholeheartedly that it really requires an intelligent look at how we can combine, how we can utilize spaces so that they're more flexible. And I mean, those staff quarters were appalling. So I think there needs to be a really close look at what the needs are and what the plan should be.
I also think, just sort of, sorry to jump back in, but I think there's some safety issues that we probably didn't consider when this was looked at that we probably want to have, security and safety issues that we want to consider.
Good point.
Yeah, I'm, in, like, overall, I like to do things right, like, but at the same time, I'm, I'm on the frugal side of things. I'm just hoping that perhaps instead of saying, okay, new architect, the sky is the limit, let's just think of the future, I'm like.
Sky would never be.
Okay, just more like, can, like, can, with our current plan, what's the best you can do? Like, and then just be a little more.
How far can we stretch the tweaking?
Exactly, and then with your vision and everything, you know.
Your architecture plan doesn't have to be as inspirational or aspirational.
Yeah, like a, a practical, like, yeah, yeah, that's it.
I think that I agree pretty wholeheartedly with Jamie, yeah.
Yeah, no, no more comments, I like the idea about staff quite a bit because that's important. And then Jay brought up the concept of, you know, we have talked about the tolerance for major projects, like one or two, and displacement of, you know, services for a while, stuff like that. So packaging all of that in our thought process is really important because if we're going to go big, then you have to think about how disruptive that is for a little while, but maybe that's the right thing, so I don't know, I don't know right now, but those are important points.
Think the disruption in the community, I mean, obviously, you're talking about the community, but there's also, we know, going to be other projects coming up with the schools, like, everyone is working on strategic planning, everyone is working on capital improvement stuff. We also, I think, I didn't think to bring this up until what, something you just said sparked it, but like, we need to consider that impact as well because if other people are thinking about going out for bond, how are we going to set it so that we're packaging things cost effectively? Because I do think combining things could save money and, yeah, but there's.
Well, my understanding is that from 1997 until, I want to say, when we did the auditorium project.
2015?
Was that the auditorium project? There weren't a lot of big projects in the building.
2007, we did the young adult loft, and there was roofing in.
2006, that was before me.
So, yes.
Yeah, the loft was done like right when I first started.
Yeah, that's accurate.
That was when?
It was 2007, 2008, the roof was done before I start, was, I started.
But that wasn't part of the origin, uh, 1997?
The, the roof, no, that was, they had to repair the roof, there was a, there was a big plan.
Wasn't the, was the third floor in 97 or was it just the seventh?
The third floor was 97 and the addition of the second floor.
It's the half where you have that metal beam on the second floor that is, includes the stairway as well as everything east, where the reference desk and all the windows.
Right, so the roof that was replaced after that was the roof on the.
I think it was the main roof.
Okay. I, the reason I'm asking that is because, I mean, to me, that says if we were to do a larger project, there may be a significant period of time afterwards where you don't need to do any really major projects. So you're looking at, you know, doing some bigger projects, making one or two big expenditures and then spending a number of years trying to pay down what you just borrowed, because you said you had to borrow it. Not that we're ever any good at that, but that's what you're really trying to do. As opposed to, you know, multiple projects that you're constantly, you know, having to pick within the budget. And you're going to see construction costs continuing to increase each year. I'm less concerned about, you know, whether or not, you know, one of the high school, well, not the high school, one of the school districts is going out to, you know, bond or whether the.
Yeah.
Park district is going out to bond, because we're all in need of, you know.
Improvements, yeah.
Just the fact.
Refresh.
Well, I mean, we're talking about a lot of improvement on the.
Yeah, there is, and I think remembering that our building is.
It's going to be 25 years since those areas were last renovated by the time we get to it.
Yep.
So.
It's a good time to, to look at things and I think our responsibility is to look at things every year, to make sure that we, you know, are there to support so that things get done in a timely fashion or on a regular basis.
And fiscally responsible.
Exactly.
So. So do you feel you have direction that, you know, now you're looking at trying to plan out for a fairly massive overhaul of the existing plan as opposed to just tweaking it?
Yes, and that we will work though within, I would say, working within the parameters that we had set in terms of kind of what we were looking at originally, budgetarily, with the understanding that, of course, you know, inflation costs, but factoring that in, but that we're ultimately not looking to say like, okay, well, we're going to just tear down the second and third floors and rebuild them, that we're going to work within it, but that we will revisit in order to make sure that how we're updating will impact things in a positive way, not only today, but in the future. And looking at how we can combine projects. And, so yes, so we will.
Yes, are you going to come back in the next meeting and kind of report back to us, okay, in order to start this process, here's what we would recommend doing, and it's probably going to be either, I don't know if we have to go out to bid on this or if we have to engage the, I think it was architects that did the original plan?
Yeah, so I'd like to meet with, you know, Kelly and Anna and give us a month or two to look things over and come up with a plan, to adjust the plan, and then we'll come back and talk about that. It would mean working with product architecture on what it would look like to update, right? What would their process look like? So we'll gather that information and we'll say, we'll come back.
In June.
In June.
And with priorities.
Yes, yes, I mean, youth, we know, is a priority based on the community feedback, based on staff feedback. I would also say that the safety piece, that, like, yes, we will come back with priorities. Thank you.
So the next item on the agenda is the fiscal year 25 board meeting schedule. Part of this is a question to the board as to whether or not we should be moving up the. the start time for the board meeting from 7:30 to 6:30 or 7:00 PM so that the meetings can hopefully not drag on as long and as late so that we can get out of here a little earlier. Maybe before or closer to closing time.
That works for me.
Seven or 6:30 works.
Seven o'clock works.
Seven o'clock.
I would think seven would be my preference.
Either work for me.
Yeah. I also did reach out to Stacy just because I know she's, you know, in that hearing, and she said that seven would be her preference.
Okay, good. So is there a motion to approve the meeting schedule presented with the meetings beginning at 7:00 PM going forward? I should say, are we talking next meeting or are we talking next year's meetings?
The next meeting is next year's meeting?
Oh, May.
Fiscally.
Oh, yeah, we're in April. We're in April. So May is the next fiscal year. I'm sorry. So yes, it would begin with the May meeting unless you guys say we're going to start this in June.
Just to make sure we're clear so everyone knows next.
So May, next month, it'll be seven o'clock.
Okay. So is there a motion to approve the board meeting schedules presented with each board meeting beginning at 7:00 PM?
So moved.
But is that a joyful?
And gleeful.
Please let the record reflect that Jamie was joyfully and gleefully moving. Is there a second?
Stop, second.
Okay, seconded by Barbara. We can do a voice vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Are in and unseen on? The motion passes.
But I'm not at next May's. I have a choir concert, so that I'm not going to get that one. Might be, no, I won't. It's earlier. Yeah, no, I won't get that one.
All right, so the next item now is our tabled executive director evaluation in the closed session. So is there a motion to go into closed section pursuant to the Illinois statute 120 slash 2C1? The employment compensation, discipline, performance or dismissal of specific employees of the public body or legal counsel for the public body, including hearing testimony and a complaint lodged against employee of the public body or against legal counsel for the public body to determine its validity? Thank you, Janet. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Maura, can we please have a roll call?
Ms. Christian?
Yes.
Mr. Globinger?
Yes.
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Inspector Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Unical?
Yes.
Ms. Yu?
Yes.
Okay, at 9:23, we will go to session. Presentation of our executive director, Kate Hall.
Motion.
Thank you, Jamie. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Maura. Can we please have a roll call?
Ms. Christian?
Yes.
Mr. Globinger?
Yes.
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Inspector Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Unical?
Yes.
Ms. Yu?
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes. Kate, congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for another good year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Here's to another one.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is agenda building. So upcoming agenda items for our May board meeting, we'll be introducing Becky Moore, our new HR director. There'll be summer reading presentation. We'll talk about the Fourth of July parade. There is a parade again this year and the question will be whether or not, to what extent, the library participates. But there's also new plans for the parade, so we'll be talking about that. The master plan and finalizing ED goals for fiscal year 25. Anything else anybody would like to ask at this point in time be included in the agenda for next month? Okay, don't forget that on May 7th, we're meeting at Glenview 5:30.
Yes, right, 5:30. Yes, and some people might be running a little bit late for previous engagements, so we'll see.
All right, 10:02, I'm adjourning the meeting.